Hey everybody, Jeremy Taurus here with the slight edge advantage and we here really try to help the small business compete against the larger competition. And we do that by taking advantage of the slight advantage. What are the little things that you do right that the big companies can't do? What are the things that you can do that other people aren't willing to do? Today, we have a guest that I'm proud to continue my political series, really for my third politician, if we could use that in air quotes, especially when we get into it. But Audrey Fesick is here with me and she is running for District One for Pompano Beach District of City Commissioner.
Pompano Beach City Commissioner, District One, yes.
And let's get your stuff up. Damn. Oh, drum roll, edit.
It'll work.
Hey, there we go. Always ends up working. So, welcome.
Thank you.
To the slight edge advantage and for having such an interest in our community. I live in Pompano Beach. I grew up in Hollywood, born in Hollywood, spent 30 years in Coral Springs. Our kids were raised out there. They wouldn't move out, so we did.
That's fair. I have four of my own and they did move out and then I, the last one didn't really want to so much and she's wonderful. So, we ended up moving to Florida and it worked out, moving back to Florida, I guess.
Well, we had been coming to Pompano Beach for years, right? Next city over Coral Springs, but now my wife and I are really residents. We bought three houses here. Landlords of two of them. We have our own house by the beach and we love it. We love our community. And so, I interviewed two people running for the Senate, one from Democrat Party, one from Republican Party. This though.
This is nonpartisan.
This, and also it's here. This affects me, my house.
Yeah, this is, and it affects my house. And so, I think that that's what's important here. You know, we are in a small community. And there's a lot of stuff that happens high level, but we're not, we're, you know, and those things will eventually trickle down to us. But what's most important to me and you in our everyday lives and our children who come to visit us by the beach, you know, or in Pompano? Is, you know, one, can they get to see us? Two, can we get, can we get around? Three, you know, what's our property value long-term gonna look like? And, you know, and how are we gonna leave it better than we, than we, than we got it?
Because it's a lot going on in Pompano Beach right now.
And some of it's amazing. Like, let's not be, let's not be negative.
We all want progress and we want improvement, but what's the definition of improvement?
What's the definition of improvement? And then what are the consequences of some improvements? So, at long-term consequences, not just short-term benefits for some people who make some quick money.
Yeah, so I know the one thing that we personally as residents, as local people, we love unique and we love family-owned businesses. And we aren't against the big guys, you know, necessarily, but we don't want this to be a Fort Lauderdale strip, number one. And then number two, I think we don't want it to be a Hillsborough Mile, which is just high-rise after high-rise after high-rise where you can't get to the beach anymore. So, what is it on, well, first off, how long have you been in Florida in Pompano Beach? And what is it that really made you dip your toe in the water? And it's a big.
It's a big dip.
Big dip, right?
I just jumped right off the boat into the water, you know, there's no, there's no dipping a toe in. I just jumped in. No, so I, my mom's side of the family is from Aruba originally and they moved here in 1966 and naturalized as US citizens. So, I am, as the first grandchild on that side, a first-generation American. So, for me, it was one of those things where we moved, you know, obviously I was born in Pennsylvania during a blizzard. So, I obviously hated the snow from the beginning, but I moved down, we moved down here as a family in 1992. So, I went to high school down here. I went to Cardinal Gibbons, which is a local, it's a local private school in Fort Lauderdale, for those who may not know. And then I moved away in 2001 after I was, after I had just given birth to my third child, was married and lived down in this area. And then I came back in 2009 and 10, I was post-divorce, trying to get daddy to come along and participate more. And then the cost of living for me as a single parent was a little too high with four children. So, I left and raised my kids in Nashville, Tennessee.
Love Nashville.
It was, it was a very, it was a very, very fun city and it was, I really loved it for what it gave me and the ability to raise my kids. But that's one of the things that I saw what has been happening in Nashville and that's what, one of the things that drove me to.
Especially on Broadway, it used to be all the little bars, row after one. Now, it's Jason Aldean and it's Kid Rock and it's very commercialized. Not that it was commercial before because of tourism, but it was all unique. Now, it's Las Vegas.
Yeah, it's more like the strip now. So, when I, when I was there in 2006, no, it was undergoing some sort of, you know, revival at that point in time. Not necessarily in a, in a bad way. There were still areas of town where, you know, hey, don't go down that street. Don't go two blocks down that street, you know, after dark. It's a little sketchy. But, but I will say that there were, there were very unique opportunities for small businesses. There were very, people were opening, you know, locals were opening their own small businesses. There were longstanding ones like Tootsie's, of course, and Legends that had been owned by locals for such a long time. And that just, and if you step off of Broadway even there, there were, there were opportunities for small businesses in Midtown and there were those who'd been operating for years. What I've seen by the land grab and the development of these buildings and some of them were historic, oh, where the Virgin Hotel is right now. Even though the Virgin Hotel is beautiful and I love Virgin Hotels, there was this absolutely gorgeous, like antebellum brick home on the corner of 17th and Division Street. And I will never forget seeing all of a sudden the fence go up and the walls come down and I just was like.
Heartbreaking. Yeah, and we've moved a couple of houses here, you know, around town. There's some houses that moved two, three times. It's really funny.
And I do applaud the city's commitment to at least trying to preserve the history. You know, there's some, there's some cost issues that we can talk about later, but. But anyway, so I digress. I'm from down here and then when 2019.
You did see that though. And now you kind of see that repeating here a little bit, a pattern.
I see the pattern. I see where, I see where Pompano, the secret's out. And I've said that for years.
It is. You know, Delray was the next big place.
Right.
And it got saturated fast.
Well, Delray is a smaller, you know, it's.
Very small.
And they focus around one street.
Yes, and but they're building out and Pompano is longer, but it's really that eastern, you know, Europe part. That's gonna be impacted the most. It is, that's why we bought there, you know, because it's the time. It's time to, if you're gonna invest all this money. Now is the time and it's fleeting.
Well, and that's the other thing too, is I've always been interested in real estate and I've always been interested in investments in general. So, when my, at the time boyfriend, now husband, was looking at potentially reinvesting some of, you know, moving some money around and selling some condos that he had in Miami. He was looking originally at like the Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale, Los Angeles area and we had barely been dating at the time. And I sort of said to him, hey, if you want some insight on the area, I'm like, that's my old stomping grounds. I am happy to sort of tell you what I know and show you some other areas that I think might be even better, including Pompano. And so, we did that. We went around and we went to Los Angeles and Los Angeles is beautiful. Don't get me wrong. But there were some water issues that they have been dealing with and king tides and a lot of the things we were looking at there, you know, just if you look at the elevations, it's, it's things that are impacting.
Yes.
People and their properties a lot right now. And then.
And then financially, that all leads to a financial assessment, taxes and.
Right. And then, and then also when it comes to, and Pompano here, we're just in a unique situation. The elevation is higher. Anyway, long story short, he came down here. He was open to the idea of other places and so, we liked Pompano. And he got an email from one of his friends that was a real estate, he was on the email list and he happened to, we were, we were actually just laying in bed watching TV and he picked up his phone and he was scrolling. And he saw this little house and, and he showed it to me. He's like, this is in Pompano and it's on the beach, you know, and I was like, give me that phone. So, as a result, I wasn't able to go with him on that trip, but I told him, I know exactly where that house is. And I said, if you go see it and the bones are good.
Right.
Put in the offer. Don't hesitate. Just do it. And he walked in, he took a video. He was sending me videos and everything at the time. And he's like, I said, I'm doing it. I'm doing it.
What year was that?
2019. We closed September 2019, so right before COVID.
Wow.
Yep. And at the time, so he still works at Vanderbilt. He's a professor at Vanderbilt and runs a lab. He's a scientist and pretty well, pretty much world-renowned. So, so for him, this was kind of a big deal and it was a dream he had had to have a house on the beach. Not necessarily he thought in Florida. He thought it was gonna be in Rhode Island where he's from, but.
So, what is your background?
My background professionally, professionally, my background, I was born and raised in radio. And I can say born and raised because I think my mom started, you know, my dad started when my mom was this little, and I was three years old doing, I like so-and-so's milk with my cookies. You know, in studio on DAT tapes.
So, you're used to this.
It's been, I'm a little out of practice, but yeah, yeah. And then I did, I did, so I've been in marketing, sales. I grew up in that world. Even as a child, I was doing radio remotes at 14 years old, dressed as a Washington apple, pretty much, pretty much in the advertising and small business world and.
Gotta get some of those pictures and drop them.
I wish I even had them. My mom probably has them somewhere and probably in a box that she's tried to throw away three times. But, you know, so, and then for me personally, you know, I was, I was always an entrepreneur, even as a kid. My mom would tell me, tell stories, even when I was a child, I would try to like stamp, stamp napkins and then sell them as sets, you know what I mean? With like paper napkins. So, as I grew up, that became, I worked in radio, I worked in sales, I worked in business development. And I've, and I've worked in marketing and helping small businesses take that next, take that next step to that next level. So, that's fun for me because there's nothing more that I enjoy than actually helping somebody who's literally pouring their heart and soul into their business and their dream.
Sure.
Succeed. And a lot of times they do that. They hit that, they, they get some instant success or they struggle with certain things and then they plateau and we start talking about it. And then they just, then they find themselves working harder than they were when they first started.
Well, you know, I heard something this morning that was very interesting and really resonated with me. And there's two things that a lot of entrepreneurs work hard for. Number one is to prove everybody wrong, right? Watch me, watch me do this. I'm not supposed to be doing this and just watch me succeed. And that's something that's really a bottomless pit, right? You're always, it's never enough to try to prove the next person wrong. The other type of entrepreneur is if I can only make this much money, I'll be happy, right? Chasing the dollars. And no matter how much they get, that's also a never-ending treadmill where you're never gonna have enough. And so, you know, just psychologically, entrepreneurs just kind of built that way. So, when you go to help small businesses succeed, knowing the psychological standpoint of their makeup helps. And so, I think being in sales, you probably have an edge of helping people read themselves.
You just ask them the right questions. They tell on themselves all the time.
Yeah, you can tell. So, my son is the money, right? How much that he has, you know, because he grew up with Instagram and Snapchat, so the icons. I'm the, I was homeless when I was a kid. Watch me, you know, no one thought I could do it.
I'm the, I'm a girl. You're a single parent. What are you gonna bring to the table? And you know, I've had a fight that, oh, you're a woman and it's, it sounds, it sounds cliche, but it's, it's not.
Well, it's cliche for a reason.
You know, right. It sounds, and I'm not blaming anything, but I actually did a, I actually had a hotel liquidation company for about. The last year was a little sketchy. I was kind of like half in, half out. I was shutting it down. But, but I fell into it during the, I was working for Gannett at the time and I was up for a director position. And it was me or somebody who'd been with tenure of the company, ten years. And shortly after, of course, she got the position. She had tenure.
Yeah, sure.
And but at that point in time, and I knew her well and I didn't blame her at all, but after that points in time, if you work in corporate America, you know, your days are numbered. So, about 90 days later, as I realized my budgets kept going high and my, I had, I had a team and my team shrunk. And my budgets still were, I was like, guys, there's no, so the writing was on the wall for me. I'm not stupid person. I had literally, I had, all my stuff was already moved out of my office. I had all the things lined up for them. Basically, like here's, when I went to pass and they're like, she's like, you're really handling this well. I'm like, I knew this was coming. Let me just be honest with you.
I actually had that experience once too. I got a phone call too and it was right before Thanksgiving, really a lot of bad coot, right? It's an uncute thing to do. Anyway, I was like, the keys are in the drawer, the badge is in the drawer, the computer's in the drawer, the passwords are in the note bag in the drawer. It's all in the drawer. If you want me to come in, I can, but everything's in the drawer.
Call me if you have any problem.
I saw this one coming, no problem at all.
So, I mean, I, you know, so I, so of course it was a, even though the writing was on the wall, I was still looking for an opportunity. And I didn't know what that was gonna be. I, of course, I didn't want to go back into radio because there's.
Well, that was a different, man, radio has.
Yeah, it was, it was just the timing and that was, this was back in like 2014, so it was back in 2014, May or so.
But from where your dad was in radio, radio is totally different. It's all corporate.
Yes.
I mean, all corporate and it's just, it's crazy.
It's a completely different, yeah, it's a completely different animal than it was way back when. And of course, things have changed, you know, as how people receive their information has also, technology has played a big part in that as well. Like, we're sitting right here. This is something that did not exist outside of a radio studio.
No, this is pretty cool stuff. I mean, this was.
Or TV studio.
This is our own show. This is our, my own television show on YouTube, on a bunch of different platforms, do whatever you want, in the most part, you still get, you know, still get censored. But we don't really talk about too much about the things that get censored, you know, business and helping people and stuff. But in general, it's a new world. And so, never has there been a better time for regular people like us to have a platform to talk about what we do and how we help people. And this is, this is something that not a lot of people, they all complain about it, myself included. But they rarely say, let me roll up my sleeves, let me put my money where my mouth is, let me run for an office seat and try to help people the way I think they need help.
Yeah, and that's what happened. So, I mean, I, we move all past my, my whole business thing and all the stuff I've done. It, I found myself after 2020 in COVID world, we had decided after being stuck on the beach.
Yeah.
Nobody felt bad for us during COVID. But you know, you, because of that, and once the world started to open up again and everybody was walking around. And everybody was stuck there essentially. We met a lot of our neighbors. And so, we really became, it really began the flip where we were not.
It wasn't California stuck. It was Pompano Beach stuck, which means business were open, but we were allowed to be on the beach and talk and.
Well, someone on the beach when they finally opened it up again, but we were on the streets and we were.
But it was only a month or so. Yeah.
So, we were, and we were, you know, even though we were wearing masks, we'd all be joking around. We'd be outside. We'd stand six feet away from each other, you know, but we were, we were, we, you know, have outdoor parties essentially. And so, we got to know a lot of our neighbors. And so, and we decided at that point, we were gonna be more Florida-centered than Nashville-centered. Because originally the plan was the opposite, oh, we'll come back, we'll come down to Florida occasionally. Yeah, no, we're in. So, as a result, you know, I got involved in, there's some development going on down the street for me. And specifically, there was a property that, that sold.
Talking about Briny?
Yes, 580 Briny is where it is. And it was sold. It was a previous hotel, motel that was, to be fair, in, in a bad state. It was, it was in disrepair. We knew the writing was on the wall for that place. It was good and it needed, it needed, it needs still something. Further south of us, there's these beautiful townhomes, Ocean Six Townhomes that have just been built.
You got a 700 block, 701, 708, 710.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's like three stories with the rooftop.
Rooftop. And then they have their own private pools in the back. I think one of them's been.
Two car, beautiful. And that's nice. It's three stories.
It fits the neighborhood.
I think there's five of them, something like that, six.
Six. And they, but they, well, technically there's five because the one put the two together.
Oh, I didn't know that. Yeah, and so, the property just north of that, they just knocked down and then the property across the street was knocked down.
Yeah. So, the property, so not really across the street, so in the 300 block of Briny is what's coming is the Solado. And I want to point out, there's.
That's the one that's on the beach. Oh, no, that's the one that's on A1A. Right, but next to the one they just built with the six plexes, so five, very right next door.
Yes, that's the one that I initially got involved with because.
Are they gonna repeat what they did next door with the new, with the rooftops? Because that's what we think.
I wanted that to happen. I was hoping that that would happen, but no, actually, that is, so how I got involved was the developer is a Canadian developer who built the property just on Eighth on Briny, but on the west side.
Okay.
And so, he had bought that years ago. The, he's planning and originally he went to the city to ask for a zoning change from RM20, which is in the Atlantic Overlay District. Somehow, nobody understands why when I ever asked the city how that got lumped in, given that the city spent $5 million plus to pave Briny Avenue to make it an extension of the walkable side that they were trying to do in the north. It was part of their master plan to leave that area low-rise and walkable.
Yeah.
And bikeable, you know, for residents of everything else, which made sense. So, as a result, there's no other from, from Ever April, which is I think five stories, right by, right across from Briny, all the way south to the very.
Atlantis.
Yeah, the Atlantis. There is nothing over about three stories, you know, I think Ever April's five stories, but that's at the one end. And then everything else is two, three stories and that's it. And there's also some single-family homes, ours included, that are one or sometimes two-story, one and a half, two stories. So, it doesn't, it doesn't fit with that, that aesthetic for the neighborhood. But they're trying to put in, so they tried to do a planned development infill, which again, I did not know any of these terms. This, this was a learning process for me. So, PDI versus what they were all gonna get would allow, would have allowed them to increase the lot density. Would have allowed them to build higher, wider and, and be a little crazier. And so, it would have been insane.
Right.
Thankfully, the neighbors and I kind of got together and what's going on here, you know, and me being the person who's a little tech savvy and, and around and had plenty of free time because I wasn't running a business and my kids were all gone.
Right.
I had, you know, I was the free time girl and, you know, and so, I sort of, I sort of somehow became a, I don't want to say a leader, but I became one of the people that was the most visible, you know, there's, because there's other people in the community that definitely did help, you know, help with the effort. But so, we just kind of created this Save Briny. It was so savebriny.com. And mainly for that, mainly the reason why we put things online is because a lot of the people in that neighborhood are also seasonal residents. And so, it was a way for us to all stay in touch. So, we built an email list. We did surveys. We sent them out. And it sort of grew beyond what I had ever initially expected it to do. And anyway, so we got, we got the zoning denied back in July of last year. They, they were, they were stuck to the RM20. Now, they're currently still trying to get 10-story building in there.
Oh, my lord.
Yeah, 10-story.
I mean, it would really stick out. Everything on the west side is high-rises, but on the east side, it's right there on the beachfront.
Yes. And I, and we have, and so, we have also the city of Pompano, we have tons of sea turtle nests and specifically along that, along that side. You know, I know up by Hillsborough Shores, they get a lot because there's, there's less light in that, in that density. Those are less light up there with the neighborhood. And then, but all along the coast, I mean, first of all, Broward's, Broward's coastline is, if you look it up, it's critically eroded.
Oh, yeah.
Critically. And we've already had ocean, we've already had Army Corps of Engineers come in and do beach re-nourishment projects. If you remember, I think even during 2020 or 2021, they were coming down the, with the big tanks of trucks and dumping sand and.
Well, there's that last street right there by that, that every time the wind blew, the sand was all on Briny. And now, they just finally planted the seagrass there where hopefully.
Yes, that was, that was at Southeast Eighth that they.
Yes. Yeah, so hopefully that will help stem that. But yeah, I mean, it, it's hard to keep all that stuff in where you need it.
And or not be washed out to sea, right? So, it's a little bit of both.
Both, right.
And, and that's the big thing too, that a lot of people don't understand is, so dunes, I don't, and I can find you the picture that I have, but it's really kind of interesting, this, this, those little sea oats that, you know, you just see and they look, oh, that's so pretty, whatever. That, what you see on the top is this is like this. And then it's pretty much if I was just standing at six feet tall almost. And I held my hand and all you see is this, the rest of me is the root system and that root system holds all the sand. And so, the native vegetation also is a home and a habitat for a lot of like beach mice, these snakes.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's, there's.
And all the, that sand still will come in, but it'll start growing. Yeah, and it's really neat. I mean, the dunes is beautiful.
And we've been, we've been actively building our dunes in the, you know, in the beach side of our house and we've encouraged our neighbors to do the same. So, we now have a pretty decent dune system. And, and so, so again, like it, it all plays into one another. So, yes, this, this building that they're proposing, this 10-stories, we have sea turtle nesting every summer. We have beach erosion already. We have a dune, a dune.
Yeah, so just for people who don't understand how the 10-story would affect it versus a three-story, well, 10-story, you're gonna have three, three to 10 times more people in it. In the lights, in the noise, after dark, really affect it. So, if you have, let's say, 10 people in there. They are probably in tune with what's going on in their environment. They, they turn their patio lights off, they shut their doors, keep the noise down at night. And it's like three or four months a year, right?
It's actually six months.
Yeah, so it's, it's a long time. And you just have people that are in tune with their environment, but when you have that big of a place there, right on it. The chances are higher that you're gonna have more light because people are gonna just not care, you know, when you just have that exponential people, it means exponential problems. And those things, they don't, I don't know if they don't hatch or they don't lay their eggs when it happens or.
Well, here's the thing is, there are, so any new building will obviously have some protective measures put in place. So, when we replaced and we upgraded our personal doors and windows, well, you know, we just said the doors because the windows were fine. But the doors that face the backside of the property, they have a sea turtle coating that is required in all, in any, in any, in anything that's close to the beach for, for a reason. To try to mitigate that light, the light issues for the sea turtles. I just watched, actually it was great. I've been waiting for years to see this again because I saw it last time I saw it was a kid. But there was a, there was a nest that was literally, you know, if you walk down our little beach path, like smack dab, like in front of.
Because you don't know where they're gonna be.
Right. And they, so it just shows up. I'm like, yes, but I managed to catch the, the hatching because I usually introduce myself. And so, anyway, what was really sad to me, and I remember, again, I remember 30-plus years ago, doing this up by the Hillsborough Club, but by the inlet.
Yeah.
And there was, you know, the number of turtles that just automatically went to the ocean versus the ones that, there were very few that came this way. We had 88 or 89 that we had to re, that we had to re, you know, position and or they, they put them in a bucket and then they put them into the ocean. And it's not just the beachfront light pollution. It's, but that's, that's a big factor, of course, but it's all of the light pollution.
Yeah.
So, that means not just on the beach, but in that beach area.
Yeah, the stuff behind it and everything. Yeah, so that's pretty neat. They have some protective measures, but people, it only works when their doors are shut, right? And the lights might go off, but the people like the doors open, especially right on the beach and, you know, and they just, a lot of people, again, the more people you have, the more problems that's gonna come with it. And we just have to decide what's important.
Part of it's education, right? And so, if people understand the reasons why, why certain things are in place, then that's one thing. The other thing that they're trying to do is this particular property, this 10-story building, there, it's, it's seaward of the coastal construction control line, which according to the Department of Environmental Protection, anything really habitable, over 60 feet in height is a no-no. And they would sort of, you know, so they sort of dissuade a larger-scale building in general as per their own rules. So, this doesn't fit. Anyway, so we, we're, as a community, obviously, it doesn't fit aesthetically. It doesn't fit with the environment. It doesn't fit with the city's comprehensive goals. The only person that's really serving is the developer to line his pockets.
Yeah. And now, even on Atlantic, on the other side of A1A, all those buildings are coming down.
Yes.
Right? And so, they're coming up with mixed-use businesses and things. And I like mixed-use personally. It's a neat concept. It's, speaking of Delray, it's like Delray, Delray has a lot of mixed-use. But yes, we want to keep Pompano, Pompano.
And you know, you know, so I was reading and doing a lot of this studying, I was reading a lot of studies about urban development. And, and I have to agree that, you know, having a somewhat more dense community where you do have mixed-use, you do have, you do have things you can walk to will help to overall lower, you know, you'll get in your car less, right?
Right.
But, you know, in our case, you, you have, you're gonna get your golf cart, you know, and I'm gonna get my golf cart finally. But, you know, the idea is that we walk a lot of places. We, and we're fortunate. And so, I think that a mixed-use development in that capacity is wonderful because especially, I would love it if we could get a, you know, a mini grocery store on our side too.
Yes.
But, you know, on the side of the bridge as we have all this development, but you know, there's gotta be like that middle ground. But a mixed-use development doesn't have to be 10, 12, 15 stories high. It can be five to six stories. And in fact, a lot of the studies that I've been reading show that if you keep it in that 50 to 60-foot range as a max, then what happens is it, it's still where you could be on the street and look up and you could, you can see the person to a point where it's still psychologically, it's a relatable distance.
Yeah.
And so, as such, you create a, you foster a better sense of community by maintaining a height, a height, not just restriction, but a height.
A standard.
Standard.
Yeah, exactly. And I like that. I mean, literally, we have a lot invested in our future here. And my wife is a broker, real estate broker, and her whole thing is to get these people from Parkland and Coral Springs whose kids are either moved out or can't move out to go, just leave them. Like we did. Let them stay. We rented, now they're our tenants, you know, but we foster that, that sense of come east, right? Changing your latitude because that's what it is. It's a different attitude, different place, different than we've been in in the past 30 years raising our family. So, how do you think that your, your, you know, being a part of the commission is gonna impact, you know, I guess your, your, what you do and how you, how you relate to your neighbors and your family and, you know, District One is pretty much Pompano Beach on the water, right?
It's pretty much, so District One primarily is everything from the north end of, you know, just north of Copens, just, you know, just the south side of Lighthouse Point. East of Federal, all the way down to McNabb.
Okay, so it's pretty long.
And then, and then, so everything east federal that goes to the beach, there's a little bit of Terramar included. And then on the west side, just south of that Southeast Seventh Street Bridge, there's like a little, there's like a little bit of the Island Club, I think, is what, you know, like there's a little bit there. And then all of that, that Cypress, Cypress, Cypress Canal. And so, it carves in, so it's like Cypress, there's a, there's a small section just west of Federal that goes south, it goes down, down to where Brewfish is at McNabb Canal there. So, so there is, and sadly, you know, they get lumped, they, you know, they're sort of the middle of the ground, right? But they, a lot of them own boats, so they come, you know, they come through. So, they are part of the, it's almost all, almost, almost all of the navigable.
Yeah, and that's, that's just east of here. This is McNabb right here. So, it's just east of here, down to the water and then east or south to Lighthouse. And yeah, that is, it's, it's a, it really changes too when you. And yeah, that is, it's, it's a, it really changes too when you get past Lighthouse, bam, high-rise city. East of Lighthouse, boom, or, or Lauderdale by the Sea, right?
Well, Lauderdale by the Sea has kept it low.
Well, just pass it, right. Just pass like, it's gone, it's gone. It's crazy there. And it's the access to the beaches is, is well, they're not on the beach in Fort Lauderdale necessarily, but um, you know, I was, I was raised in Hollywood where it has been pretty good, pretty good. It's got some high rises on, on the east side. But uh, the value, you know, being here in Pompano now, I'd love to see, you know, more small business, family owned. Fun restaurants and, you know, because I think we do a good job of supporting.
We do. I mean, I, 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 I actually prefer to support a smaller business.
Yeah.
Then, and then go to a chain.
Probably one of my favorites, right on Atlantic. Been there for years and years and years.
Cafe Max, been there for years and years and years.
Must so long.
Ever go, yeah. If you ever go, they did these, um, they have some standards, of course. My husband loves the tuna sashimi pizza. Um, but the, but the other standard that they, I don't know, I, I keep begging them to bring it. They did this short rib like pocket thing.
Anytime he says short rib, you have me.
Done, I'm in. But uh, yeah, so, so the, and, and of course, like the dry cleaner that's been there for fifty something, fifty-six, almost. Yeah. So the, um, you know, and even Foundry, that's somewhat newer, Vega Lounge, you know, these are, these are places that are still.
But they're unique.
Unique. And they've got their own flavor.
I mean, we have Houston's. Houston's is probably the biggest thing there.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'm glad they're there. I do love Houston's.
I love Houston's too. I mean, listen, if you, if there's food, I'm, I'm in, you know, and so it's not.
But it's a nice mix.
But there is a nice mix. And of course, don't forget, like, just on the, just, just east of, um, on the east side of the bridge, there's that smaller, there's that smaller strip that's been there forever. So like Dennis Frill, he's got his art studio in there and, and, and he does, he does a podcast. There's um, there's a new tenant in there that does an Ivy by Doc. So they're basically like, like a wellness center, which I think is great. So you don't have to get in the car. You can just walk to it if you're coming. Um, you know, so there's a few new, there's a few new people that have decided.
The sands on the east side has been there forever.
If, if those walls could talk.
Yeah, well, they tried to upgrade the end. I wouldn't talk, the restaurant is one thing, the hotel rooms.
Yeah, well, I, I, I remember the sands and shooters from way back when.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, it, in the, in the nineties, they were doing a, like Hawaiian Tropic bikini contest and wet t-shirt contest, I think, or something like that.
Yeah, the bad old days, I guess.
The good old, bad old days, the Gen X days when nothing was on camera.
Yeah. Exactly.
But uh, no, so, so anyway, so yes, I, I, I wanted, it transitioned for me. Um, I, I wanted to, to, I love the area. I love the community. I love some of the growth in the community. Um, I, and I want to specifically, I know you mentioned Solado, the one that's at the three hundred block. And I wanted to specifically mention that before, you know, before I transitioned to the next thing. The Solado is, it was, it was a the property itself was sold. It was bought by one developer and they had proposed this sort of big block. You know, of a, of a development that people were, ate it up or about. And um, at the, and this was done before we were really, you know, really sort of in the area or paying attention. I mean, and so the, the, the developer had a project that was already approved. They didn't do it. They sold it to another developer. And I have to give props to the, to, to the, the developer who did purchase Solado. Because they, for, I don't know how, but they took an active interest in what the community had said.
Wow, yeah.
They took an active interest in what, in what the commu, in, in what the, the neighbors to their south, the Christopher House and the Pompano Beach Club and the people in front of them and the people around them. They, they actually listened.
Wanted to fit in.
They wanted to fit in. And, and you know, on the west side, in between the Christopher House, which is seven stories and Pompano Beach Club, which is, you know, half a block up. But it's, it's, it's one of the old, it's the, one of the tallest buildings in Pompano, well, the towers match. Um, but those were, have been there for such a long time. Um, they, they did it, they did a really nice job. They made, they knew that Briny was important to people.
Yes.
They, they, they gave up to the city. They gave them parking along Briny.
Nice, yeah.
Then they have a strip of landscaping. And what they did when their bottom two floors, they made sure that all of their parking for their residents and for the business that is, they're putting on A one A. They did, they put that where you enter off from A one A, so it's not to track, so it's not to put stop traffic on A one A. They come in off Southeast Fourth. And opposite where the Christopher House has their parking turn in turnout, they matched it.
Oh, nice.
And so they matched it there and they set, they have a retail component on the, on the west side along A one A that stays somewhat low.
Okay.
They put the towers in the middle, or you know, the sort of the bulk of their building in the middle. And then they put their pool deck along the beach side of Briny. Where they have landscaping. So.
Yeah.
If you look at their building and they do have a, they do have drawings online, which I've seen, but they also have now a sales office that you can go in and see a three dimensional sort of view of this. You can see the thought that was put into making it. And they only went, I think, like it was eight or nine stories. It was like, cause they, the side, the last one has like a penthouse or something like that, you know, so it's a double story. So they, they, they went for less, less number of people, higher quality units.
Sure, yeah.
And.
We, we walked there almost every morning and we, I stop at the same place. I take a daily picture. Right now it's flat, finally, just nothing, nothing. But I have the one palm tree I put in the center of the frame and I'm gonna watch it build right around it. Yeah, over time.
So I, I just want to, you know, like I said, some development's good, some development's bad. This, this is good. This is what I'm paying attention.
That's all you gotta do. Pay attention.
Right.
And then people will welcome you. And then it's such a happier place to be, you know, and, and it's true. People will pay just about anything to live there. So you can make it smaller and better and get as much money as if you went taller with making a, uh, trying to cram more in there, but you're not gonna get as much because of, of the, it's, anything that's harder to get is more valuable.
Right. I mean, let's look at it. Would you, it's like, let's play a game of would you rather? You know what I mean? Would you rather, if we ever have another sort of COVID style outbreak of whatever, or we ever have some sort of lockdown and you're in a condo building?
Yeah.
So that's the other thing too, is yes, there's all these new condo buildings, but remember because of Surfside, the higher you go, the, the more, the more potential you have to, you know, covering costs for your HOA or, or insurance and, and.
Assessments.
Assessments and things like that. And granted for a new building.
Yeah, it's thirty years away.
Right, right. It's out of the, it's out, but it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be happening, especially living on, living near the beach.
It will, yeah.
We're talking about making plans for twenty fifty, like flood, you know, flood zones and climate change.
And they're, and they're just, they know what's coming now. So the homeowners association fees are much higher because they have to be fully reserved, you know, for whatever the eventuality is that they're gonna have to do. Now they know what they're gonna have to do.
But if you're in a smaller building.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't necessarily have.
From a lot of that stuff.
So I mean, so there's, and there's trade-offs. And so then again, it's also more fostering a neighborhood community. So either a smaller condo building with nicer, with nicer amenities, less people and it's more exclusive, that's, that's gonna generate a higher sales price because of supply and demand.
Yeah. And I love those townhouse tiles because then, then especially if it's fee simple, which means every owner is on their own, basically. There's a master agreement, but you know, that's, that's really where we like to, well, we like to be in single family.
Right.
Because.
Well, I mean, I don't just, I don't dispute that.
A lot of people don't. Love people, people love condo life. I like, you know, I like having really four, three hundred and sixty degrees of my own property around me and.
Yeah.
Nobody walking in high heels above me and, and all that stuff that we, I, I've lived in that kind of environments before. And this, it was what I needed at the time, but it's not what I want.
You know, when I was living in Nashville, I, I lived, I lived in a, um, a townhome community that I, that I picked specifically because of its location. So where the high school and the middle school was and the kids could walk themselves to the mall that was down the street, you know, and so they had the freedom of, of movement that they could walk. I chose it.
Right, yeah.
But I agree with you.
And the safety.
The safety here. And it was a sort of minimal, minimally gated community. It wasn't really gated. It was like, there was a gate, a fence around it and there was no gate in the front. It was fine.
We call it keeping honest people honest.
It was just harder to get out of it. You would come in one way and go out the other way. But um, you know, it, so I picked, I, I understand that. Like, and I think that the value, if you look even in Delray. If you look at the property values, that when the, the places that they built those townhomes, those values are there and they're gonna hold because they're unique.
Yeah.
Especially if you're, the closer you are by the beach and even right across from the brand new ones, the Ocean Pearl, the values are gonna hold. So.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for a smaller level community style living. And remember that Pompano was a fishing village first. It was fishing and agriculture. It was fishing out east and it was like a little fishing village and, and agriculture. And so if you go to the commission meetings and, and you hear people say in the northwest, we were picking beans, we were picking beans, you know, like we were, they were not, my family was this, my family was this. Yes, that's true. It was a very, very family centered community, both east and west side.
And that's why it's so important for the people who know that to be involved in the commission and, and who are making decisions of the families and the future of the town.
Yeah.
Uh, and what is our, our population doubles?
Oh, I just.
You know, during winter.
I, well, yes, in winter, but outside winter. I just read a stat that in, that, uh, I believe it's like five hundred and twenty people a day.
Are moving.
To South Florida.
Yeah, South Florida in general.
But more specifically, like not Fort Lauderdale, Miami, like more specifically like Pompano, Fairfield.
Well, and if they're moving here, like let's say to, to the Parkland Coral Springs, because they want to raise a family, the people like us are selling them because they're not building out there. There's hardly any place to build. They're coming here like we did.
Right.
We're moving it to the east to be that beach attitude and the golf cart community.
And I wanna, and, and if, you know, and so anyway, so I, I, I want to apply, we've been talking a lot about the beach side. I want to also kind of applaud the city for paying attention to connecting the dots between the, it's like, it's, it's years, for years, it's been very sort of separated by Dixie Highway. And, and that's not necessarily fair either. Um, or west of Federal, like old Pompano was old Pompano and then, you know, so for years it's been very separated. And I do appreciate that, that the trying to connect the dots. And to make it simple. The only, the only, the only drawback that a lot of people have been complaining about lately is, and I am in full agreement is if you're gonna approve high-rise buildings or bring more development to your area, you do not narrow the lanes.
The lanes on Atlantic.
On Atlantic. I mean, it's just, it was already a problem before we narrowed the lanes.
I don't understand it. I, I'm still having a little bit of hope that they know what they're doing. I can't understand how that makes any sense, but the people that are in charge, typically they've made some good decisions here.
Typically, yes.
So I don't know how this one got by.
It's part of, so it's part of, it, it, what I can tell you from seeing their city's master plan and reading through all their comprehensive stuff. I think the thought process was genuinely a good one.
The slow, the traffic.
It was with probably the best interests in mind, but we don't live in a utopian society. People, people drive cars.
And they want to get to where they're going.
They're going. And, 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 and we live, we don't live.
Mayberry.
Right, we don't live in Mayberry.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and what's worse is we don't live in an area like Mayberry that doesn't have potentially hurricanes.
Yeah.
Or, or flooding or other natural disasters. And so if you're gonna increase, I mean, look at, it's just, it's just in numbers.
Yeah, they, increase the population. You gotta increase at the same rate the traffic.
If anything, I would have suggested, had I been in part of this, you know, twenty something years ago, any new development.
Well, that's okay. Elon's gonna build underground tunnels to get us all.
Will they be underwater tunnels at some point? But um, but you know, no, I mean, but the idea is just like, you know, if anything, we should have had the conversation with the building to step it back. So that in the future, we potentially could have either had a parking lane or had the ability to widen it rather than narrow it. But that's beyond that.
I, I'd take tenth. I'd take ten, as far as I can.
Right.
You know, but uh, because I live east of Federal also, but my recording studio here is west of Dixie. And this, I call Coral Springs East Naples now. I don't like driving out west past the I ninety-five. This is as far as I go. This is an Andrews.
We have a Sam's Club membership that we, that I, and again, for, for only two of us, it makes no, it really makes no sense. But um, you know, occasionally we use it to like stock the fridge when the kids are coming or, you know, he wants, if we have a party.
Yes, yeah.
But it's a half an hour out there at least. And that's, that's with no traffic.
Yeah.
And um, and yeah, it's, we don't do it either.
Yeah. Well, all our family's still out there, so we have to go out there at least once a month to see the kids or to see uh, the, her brother for the Sunday dinners and stuff. But listen, you know, I like to mess around with them and tell them, you know, sometimes we stop overnight on the way out there or something. We don't try to break all that drive off at, at once, but we love it. We're never gonna leave.
We're not leaving.
And we love that people like you are here, um, that are going to be really cognizant of the growth and everything. What can we do?
What can we do?
So I think I have some things here. I don't know how they'll look here, but what I'll do is I'll try to put them on, you know, in edit, in post, where you can see them. But this is how they get ahold of you.
Yep. That's all my contact info. Um, and uh, you can definitely share it. Um, the other thing that, so the other thing that we're, but this, this sparked this is again, as I was, so as I was doing the save Briny stuff, um, I tried, I was going to planning and zoning meetings. I was going to development review committee meetings. I was going, you know, I was attending them or I was looking at the agenda. I was, I was keeping people informed. And I, because my last name is Fezick.
Now that's spelled F E S I K.
Yep.
Um, because people, we do, do podcast audio only too. So Audrey F E S I K.
I was like, yes. And before, you know, so before we got married, it was, it was still a different name, but it was Gorchov. But eh, but the idea was at that point in time, through all of this process. I had a different last name than our current commissioner. And um, and so when people were telling me that what they were thinking about the development in the area in general, what they were thinking about things. Very freely, people were sharing their opinion with me about the problems they were having um, with the city, with their current representation, um, not getting phone calls back, being, 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 feeling like they were being placated.
Yeah, because you're the go-between.
Correct. And I was just, and I was.
People to the government's decisions.
Right. And so.
Your commissioners is, is close to the ground as you get with still being, making major decisions in government.
Your job is to represent the people that you serve. That, that is the job of the city commissioner. Your job is to know what the people want and to, and to conduct that outreach and have them know you and, and so that you can truly represent the people and the community as a whole. So not just your specific community and the people there, but then how that plays into also.
Affect your district.
The rest of the city because you, ultimately, it's, it's, it gets divided up a bunch by, oh, we're here, we're here, we're here, yes. But we are one city and it's still a small city and in.
And there's only so many resources to go around, so.
Right. And so, you know, and, and ultimately what, what benefits one will ultimately benefit us all. So uh, you know, it's, it's not like, you know, it's not like we don't even know our district lines, you know, we, most people don't, you know, like, but uh, unless you look it up. So, so what happened there was I, it, it came to a head where there was a deadline of, and I had asked even city officials and, or not city officials, but people I met through the city had set, seen me show up at all these things for over a year. And they're like, why don't you run? I'm like, no, no, no.
How long has the incumbent been in seat? Long time? Couple of years?
I think twenty, I think it was twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was twenty eighteen was her first.
Okay.
Run. Cause she had run for.
So uh, it's a long time.
Yeah, she had run for Congress. I think she had run for, she ran for a House Representative of Congress. She ran for something in twenty sixteen.
Okay.
Um, I just don't remember what it is right off the top of my head. But anyway, so I, it, as it turns out, I've, I've done all this and, and I've, I've heard all the things. And she ran unopposed several times. No, the, the, one of the other things about the beach side is that a lot of, like you said, people, they've already had their kids. They're, they're sort of.
No, they're past it. They've run condo boards before.
Yeah, we were HOA presidents, et cetera.
Yeah, they're here to take it easy. Or they're not here.
Right. Or they're, or they're sometimes here, sometimes not.
Snowbirds, yeah.
And it's not just snowbirds. Sometimes they just, they, 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 they claim here.
They vacation a lot.
Vacation a lot. And so they're, they're just, they're, and they're enjoying their lives. Let's just put it this way. They're, they're sort of at that, the, the majority of them are at that.
It is a unique place.
Yeah. And um, so.
It's an older constituent, constituent for sure.
Yeah. And I, and the other thing is true, there's some people who bought ages ago, right? And they, with the plans to retire here, they had foresight ages ago. They loved this area. And they bought ages ago and then now they're being hit with a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in assessments. You know, one for a hundred thousand for this one and then for the clubhouse. Another seventy-five thousand. So that's a lot. And um, anyway, so I, it came down to it. I had other people ask me to run, ask me to run. And I was like, no, thank you, no, thank you, no, thank you. And it came down to the wire and I just kept seeing the same, I'd kept bringing the residents together and I kept presenting information. I invited our commissioner to my home with, to have a social with people in the community. And it got back to me, um, through a reporter who was trying to ask questions about the five eighty Briny project. That she had asked her and she referenced that meeting as saying that she quote, cleared up a lot of misinformation and everybody was pretty much okay with it now.
Oh, wow.
And I said, well, I'll give her the first half.
Yeah.
She may have cleared up a lot of misinformation. I don't know if that's true or not. I said, but uh, everybody is still not, not okay with this right now. And so the people who are passionate about it are not okay with them just, that one meeting was not gonna solve all their problems. So uh, when I heard that, it was, it was just before qualifying week and there was another aspect that, you know, the planning and zoning, I had put my name in and was sort of said, okay, well, we'll take care of this. We'll just get you nominated. So you can start to just, at least then you'll, on the planning and zoning board, you'll have, be able to see these things and have a voice.
Sure.
The worst thing you can tell somebody like me is, I'm gonna have a voice and I'll be able to use it. And then.
And shut the door.
And then shut the door. So uh, so that, so I had put them, I had put the, I had put my stuff in, you know, weeks, months before, and like paperwork in. And so I was coming down to the line with qualifying and I, and I was agonizing over it. Had to, had to really talk to my husband because we are newlyweds and that was part of it. I'm like, I'm like, I need you to be on board with this.[1698.05] So, uh, he goes, you're gonna do it anyway.
And he's a very data driven person, right? Being a scientist, uh, it's about the numbers and, um. So how did he feel? Because for, I think for somebody like you, emotion has a lot of driven, driving this.
It's emotion driving it. Yeah. I mean, so I, I, the way I feel about where we live right now, I mean, I tell everybody this, you know, those tell marketers call you trying to buy your house or whatever. They're like, we have, we have buyer, we have a premium buyer.
Sure.
Sure. Let's start the, let's start the, the negotiation somewhere around three quarters of a billion dollars. Cause that's what we're, that's even where, like that's, I can't go anywhere else.
Yeah.
For, you know, so period.
Yeah.
And, uh, so my plan is to stay there and, and that's my forever home at this point. I'm done.
Yeah.
I'm good. I'm good. I don't need, you know, anything else. And, uh, so with that said, he, he wanted, you know, he wants me to be able to have the freedom and flexibility like we had planned. But also he knew that I can't sit still. So, um, and he's like, look, you're doing this anyway and you care about the community. He's, I think this is a great option. Look, you're gonna get to know a lot of, a lot more people than we've already known. It'll be fun. It'll be fun. It'll be a great way for us to stay involved in the community. And he said, you know, long term. You know, whether it's city commissioner or whatever, you're still gonna have a great time, even just the process. And you're gonna do this anyway. You're gonna stop and go to these things.
Yeah, exactly. You're gonna have a voice.
So he was finally in.
I mean, that's how we met. It was another small business owner that we're friends with and you had an event and she invited us to come and hear you out and we went and, and we really did see the value of having somebody like yourself. In a commission seat that really directly affects our, our community, my wife and I.
We have to protect, we have to protect our community and we have to make sure that what our residents are saying.
Yeah.
And this goes for any commissioner.
Just don't touch the golf course.
Yeah, just don't.
Don't touch my golf course. I know. I wanna know who that is so I can threaten them.
Yeah, district two, that's wrong. But, uh, yeah, no, but the, the golf course, they've actually made major improvements.
Oh, huge. It's a nice, it's a, it's a very, very, both golf, golf courses, uh, it's, it's probably one of the best in Broward County now.
Yeah.
And it's probably, and it's municipal. So the city runs it. It's very low cost. I don't want to tell people that because I don't want more people coming to it.
But then there's the Goluppies right there.
That's great too, especially if you like music.
Like live music on weekends. I mean.
Every night of the week, just live music. But those weekend ones that they have. Crazy shows, like real, real shows, Bee Gees and Elvis and Leonard. Yeah, it's nice. It's like great when, and it's good that we can jump in the golf cart, right? Oh my gosh.
Oh my gosh, I can't wait. Mine gets delivered to dirt. Anyway, so I'm so excited. Uh, I've been, I've been, you have to understand, I've been, I've been begging for like, I've been begging for a golf cart or a go kart since I was like five. Okay. I was five years old and I, I wanted a go kart and I wanted a golf cart. I wanted something like this. And so anyway, I, I was fourteen, I worked on a golf course doing, um, so a total tangent. But doing their, their tenth hole, sort of in between ninth and tenth hole, they're like snack shack. It was my first official job as a, you know, at fourteen. And I was so excited because I got to drive the golf cart.
Yeah, the golf cart's a big deal.
So, yeah, so, um, but anyway, so it came down to it and in the end I, um, so the key piece of information why I was. Struggling so hard with the decision is because, um, and I mentioned that my last name was different than our commissioner currently, the incumbent essentially, um, we are related. We are first cousins. And, um, I've been trying to downplay that quite a bit, but it's, it's still the fact and, um, I don't, I don't.
Thanksgiving can be awkward, but listen, I think it's, listen, you're both trying to do the right thing and you're in each of your minds.
Right.
Now, everybody is subjective. Who, at the end of the day, uh, the community ever is gonna be more aligned with, it's always a personal selfish choice. So. You know, it's not like there's a good and a bad or a black hat, white hat, you know?
It's not.
It's really all about, uh, coming up with your ideas and sharing your ideas and see how many people resonate with it.
Well, the way I look at it too is, is, and it, you know, some people are like, oh, that's gonna be like you said, awkward at Thanksgiving, right? Yeah, no, you know, it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. And, and so if you think about, um, there's lots of players in sports, right? Look at Venus and Serena Williams, for example. They play the same sport. They play against each other.
Yeah.
Okay. And do they give each other any breaks on the tennis court when they're playing against each other?
They're not sisters when they're playing.
Correct. And they play fair.
Yeah.
They, they, they play to the best of their ability. They play a clean game. The, and, and at the end of the day, whichever one wins, the other one will support.
Yeah.
They, they take that loss. They shake hands. In fact, the other one, they give them a big hug. They take pictures with them, the other one holding the trophy.
It really does just elevate everyone's game.
Correct. And, and so, and it's, and it, and that's exactly what the mission for me is. Like, okay, yes, we're related, but no, it's not, for me, it's not a problem.
Right.
For me, it's a, um, let's just elevate the game. Let's, you know, like, let's, let's, we can agree to disagree. Everybody in families says house divide with sports. I mean, I don't know how many football fans there are that listen to your podcast, but. How many people have a house divided with, you know, like the kid wears the onesie, you know what I mean? That there, people don't talk to me while I'm in this. Uh, so. I don't think it's a bad thing. I, and if there's, I, I understand there may be some sensitivity because I, I struggled with it for a long time, but it, it's, it is, it's, it's done.
Well, that just shows really a more toward your conviction of your beliefs and what you want for the community and the things you're seeing, you're directly impacted.
And I, and I, I would do that, right? So if it was affecting you, you would do it. It, does it matter? At some point you, that there's a tipping point is what, you know, in anything, tipping point. The tipping point is. I've been doing this for over a year. I've been very involved. I know based on what I've heard that, and what I've seen. The votes in city commission, the way that things go down, it's always a four, two vote, four, two vote in favor of the developers. In favor of, in favor of, in favor of larger scale interests.
That's interesting.
And.
That you know that? Cause I didn't know that.
Oh, you can watch them. They're all online. If you wanna go back, watch them. And, 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 and when you start to see how some of the projects are funded and then, then there's the city commission, but then there's also the CRA, which again has done some great things. But when you start to see some of the funding and you start to see the shifts in some things, it's like, it's like going, it's like watching the Wizard of Oz and pulling back the curtain. It's kind of, you know.
Yeah.
But, but there is an opportunity for residents to be represented. And do I think I'm gonna do a great job? Yes. Why? I've represented people my entire life.
Yeah.
I, I, I stand up for people. That's what I do. And so I'm not a politician.
I can identify with that, yeah.
I'm not a politician, but I guess I'm technically a politician.
You're protector.
Yeah, but I, but I am, I am a mama hen. I've been called mama hen since pretty much high school. My girlfriends can testify that they, that's what they called me even then.
Yeah.
And, um, I've always been a protector and a champion of, of those who, who need to be championed. And, uh, that's it.
So I wanna get your information out here. The, the website?
Yeah, the website is currently under production, but there's a, there's a placeholder there.
So Audrey for Pompano dot com. Great, great website. Uh, the number four. The email address is hello at Audrey number four Pompano dot com. And, uh, phone number nine, five, four, two, two, eight, three, four, six, six. If you're interested in hosting. A meet and greet.
Oh, absolutely.
In the district, even around Pompano.
Doesn't have to be a restaurant, could be just a, you know, it can be a business in general. Like, we'll just do it.
Nine, five, four, two, two, eight, three, four, six, six. Call Audrey. There is a scan, uh, QR code I'll put on here. You might be able to get it, but it's, it might be out of a funny angle, but, uh, but I'll do it in the corner, you know, throughout the show. You have plenty of opportunities.
So that's actually, that scan code, it goes to, um, there's a, the company called Anadote, which is basically a campaign fund and everything. And for the most part, I've been fairly, uh, for the most part, just getting my name out there. I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not automatically getting checks from business owners and, and developers. You know, cause I just don't know them. I don't have the relationships that, uh, they're, they're, not yet, not yet. I'm, I'm doing my best to make sure people know who I am and what I stand for. But you know, so since we've talked about it, sustainable redevelopment, um, community input and, uh, you know, being cautious about what we're doing with the environment, because they all, they all play together. And, and tourism will also play into that. So that redevelopment portion, we need to be sort of balanced, needs of residents versus the needs of tourism.
Hundred percent.
But I do have, and I, I know you'll share, uh, like I sent it to you. Um, my biggest thing is for residents of Pompano Beach, it's a specifically, it's a survey. And, um, I, I have, sorry, that's my, oh, that's my copy, but I'll get you a better one.
Yeah.
That I just had, I just had cards printed, so obviously use them.
All of those things, we'll, we'll be able to get up.
Yeah, but.
It'll be in the links also.
Yes. So, um, and so the reason why I created that, and I have postcards that I made for that. That's why the, the, uh, print things there. But it's a survey that's, it's very simple. It's three questions. Well, technically four, but it's three questions. The first, the first question I can just tell you is. You know, what are the top three things that you love about Pompano Beach right now? Right?
Yeah.
Uh, the second question is what are three things you see that we have room for improvement in Pompano Beach right now? Not hate, but just room for improvement. The third question is, are there any other things in Pompano Beach that are happening that you feel that are going to impact your, you and your family that you would like to convey? And then the fourth one is saying, hey, how long have you been here? Um, you know, how long have you lived in Pompano? And it said, and it, it even says in parentheses, doesn't have to be sequential. You know, so how long have you had a vested interest in Pompano Beach? And then the rest is just personal information. If you don't live in district one, no problem. I will share that information with other commissioners in the district. So, because I think it's important and, and.
It is, yeah.
It's important for the city as a whole to have that information.
Yeah.
It's important for each commissioner to have that information and I'll be able to reach out so that if there is a question or concern that you have, that you put, your, your voice actually gets to the person. If you, if you know, you should be able to see or know the city, you can go where you can find them. But if you fill out this form, I'm gonna send it to that person. You know what I mean? Like, or it'll.
Cause you're telling people.
Well, or it'll come to me because let's face it, I'm not.
You're gonna have a voice and you're gonna make sure their voice is heard.
That's the whole, that's the whole, that's the whole thing. I got so tired of hearing people say, it doesn't matter what they're gonna do, what they want. They're gonna do what they want anyway. I said, no, 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 that's not how this works.
That's only, that's only in theory. In reality, in practical reality, it shouldn't be that way. It's, it's, and, and it, it can't be that way.
If people don't.
For us to make progress in a way that we want it to.
Right. If people don't raise their voice, then they choose not to have a voice. It's that same old thing we, that we say in business. You know, if you fail to make a change, that's your choice as well.
It is a choice, yeah, yeah.
So, so.
You're still made a choice.
You still have to take, yeah, you have to take personal responsibility for, for raising your voice. Or at least if you don't, if you're not comfortable speaking, send an email. If you're not comfortable, you know, fill out a survey. So you, if you're not comfortable coming to meetings or you travel a lot and can't make it, find another way.
Right. Well, that's the whole, your whole job is being that, that conduit.
Yeah. And so find a way. If you, and if you tell me something, I, I hold it and, and I carry it. It's, it's just, and that's been my, whether it's commissioner or not.
Yeah.
I mean, I have a tendency, yeah, it's my MO. I'd be like, if you tell me something and, you know, I'm gonna retain it and I'm gonna know this person's sensitive about X, Y, and Z.
So what's next on the voting thing? It, that's November.
November fifth.
Fifth is the next, the next time they could do anything right now is November fifth and they can vote for you.
Yes, that's what they can do. Until then, they can help support me and help me get my word out, the word out. They can, you know, I've got, they can send letters, I mean, or they can introduce me to their friends. I'm happy to meet with neighborhood groups. I mean, I, I've had, I mean, look, and, and I wanna make sure that, that I address the thing that I'm not a politician. I, I don't have any political aspirations. Okay? I am, I am forty-six years old. I think it's pretty soon it'll be forty-six and a half, like I used to count, you know? Uh, but, you know, I'm forty-six years old. I have grown children. I am, I am happily now remarried. Uh, and, and I am not going anywhere.
Right.
Uh, the reason why I'm doing this as city commissioner is because I care about the community. My passion is gonna be right here and focused on district one and the rest of Pompano Beach. I.
Yeah, this isn't a stepping stone.
This is not a stepping stone for me. I don't.
You don't wanna be the next Wasserman.
And that's probably gonna piss off a lot of people, to be honest. Uh, you know, in terms of the people, the developers or the people that are, that are trying to.
You're a thorn that's gonna be here around for a while.
I know, I, I know I'm gonna be a thorn in some people's sides, but, but I'm used to being that. So I, I'd like to, I'm not har, I'm not, I have no problem being.
That's a good thorn.
Yeah, a good thorn. I mean, I think it's just a voice of reason or say, hey, let's just pause here for a second.
Yep, absolutely. Hello at Audrey for Pompano. That's the number four dot com and the phone number is nine, five, four, two, two, eight, three, four, six, six. Please get in touch with Audrey and, and have a, a meet and greet.
Yeah.
Get, invite some friends, invite some business owners. Uh, there was just one on the Pompano Beach, uh, the, the rooftop there.
Pier six.
And that was great.
I wanna, I, I gotta give thanks to their entire staff because I had called ahead and I didn't know how many people would be attending and they were very, very accommodating. And so, and then what's best is the servers that were there. So the, the bar manager and the two servers that were handling that, that night. I had known the, one of them, um, I'd seen her on a Sunday when it was so slow. And I looked at her and I said, I know you, we've already had a conversation. You're cool.
Yeah.
I said, you look at the table. If something needs to be replaced, just do it. I trust you.
It was so good.
You, you handle it and, and it's, I trust you and you, and I trust your judgment. And she was like, I got you.
It was, it was so good.
I didn't look at that table again, and I think I had one little piece of a square of a pizza.
Oh, yeah.
Delicious, but, or flat pie. But no, so I gotta give them credit. And then of course Briny, um, I, I'm, Briny's like my local.
The thing I liked about it is, eh, we knew, I've been to political events, uh, a few of them and, and some of them were great and some of them you felt like you were just there buying a time share, right? You had to hear the spiel and then they come and beat you over the head. That was not a, you didn't, I don't even think you made a speech.
I didn't.
Uh, we took a big group picture and then you just went around and we just cut the, you know, the breeze. We shot the breeze up on top in the breeze and it was awesome. And it didn't feel like a political meet and greet. It was just a bunch of people and from your neighborhood that you didn't know.
Right.
You know?
And from neighborhoods, yeah. So, and people invited, so people I did know invited other people, people I had met invited like their HOA, you know? And, and that's how I want it to be. And I will, I'm gonna fully disclose this. When it comes to showing up at meetings, when it comes to showing up at the, you know, and sitting on the dais if I am elected. Then I will of, of course represent professionally. I live in this area though. I live in the beach. I live on the beach. Nine times out of ten, I walk, you know, I walk up and down Briny. I walk up to the, past the pier. I'm on the pier. So people, as they get to know me, I'm very approachable and chances nine times out of ten, you're gonna see me in jean shorts, a bathing suit, a tank top and, and a ponytail, a cap. That's okay. And I, and.
Well, that's your job.
Right. And he's like, my job is beach, okay? You know?
B, B, A, C, H.
My job is beach. Well, some people will think it's different by the end of this, but we'll see. But no, um, you know.
You can't make an omelet without cracking some eggs.
But I mean, I, I, I want to be, I want to be continually just me.
Yeah.
And I want, and I wanna have our event. That's gonna get. But I, I just wanna be completely approachable and I want that two people feel like, hey, you're not gonna bother me. You're not gonna whatever, you know, like invite me. I want, I want to get to know people. I genuinely like people. I was in marketing and advertising. If, if you're in marketing and advertising and sales and business development, it's just like entrepreneur, it's, it's.